All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Hayden, Idaho. It's Tuesday, October the 22nd, 2024. I'm calling us to order. May we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yep.
And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
We have a quorum. Tom, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions and corrections. See, do we have any from you?
None from us.
I will point out for council, when we get to item 6A, those will be two motions, please. So, I know it's on the agenda as one item, but we'll do two. I guess we shall move into proclamation then. Tonight, we are celebrating Extra Mile Day. If my computer will cooperate. I'm going to summarize. Extra Mile Day is a day where we recognize citizens who have, to use our quotes, "go the extra mile" in their volunteerism to the city. We're blessed with many people who volunteer their time and do so without asking for anything. And so, I urge everyone to obviously go extra mile in their own lives. But tonight, I'd like to recognize two people that have helped out our city for a long time.
You tell me when to start.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've been asked by the mayor to read this. Lisa Troxel is recognized as an extra mile hero. Lisa continues serving Hayden since 2007, including her current leadership of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Forestry Commission. She was integral in the creation of the Pawfoot Dog Park, Broadmoor Park Junior Disc Golf Course, and Hayden Bike Rodeo. Lisa has volunteered as a kite festival and parade judge. She's also influenced improving the Stoddart Park Playground Implementation, Barn Restoration, the Updated Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, Honeysuckle Beach. She is currently helping plan the Hayden Canyon Park. Lisa's commitment to make contributions to improve our citizens' quality of life are commendable and epitomize being recognized as an extra mile hero.
Thank you. Malia Sampsel, will you join me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming.
So, Malia Sampsel is recognized as an extra mile hero. Malia currently chairs the Hayden Parks Recreation and Community Forestry Commission, where she has served since 2015. She was, excuse me, she was integral in the creation of the Pawfoot Dog Park, Broadmoor Park Junior Disc Golf Course, and Hayden Bike Rodeo. Malia has volunteered supporting Arbor Day and Hayden Lights and Hayden Day events. She also influenced improving the Stoddart Park Playground Implementation, Barn Restoration, the Updated Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, and Honeysuckle Beach. Malia's commitment to make contributions to improve our citizens' quality of life are commendable and epitomizes being recognized as an extra mile hero.
Thank you so much. It's really great to celebrate what some of our ordinary citizens are giving to the city, so thank you very, very much. Okay, our next item on our agenda is declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Wow, this thing is really slow tonight. Should I need a drink? All right, I think we can all agree, domestic violence is awful, and it happens everywhere, including Hayden. And so, I apologize, but I'm going to shorten the proclamation and just declare that Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Hayden, I call upon all residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to raise awareness about domestic violence and support those affected by it. Thank you. I also don't want to overlook, Megan is here tonight from Safe Passage. Megan, would you like to add anything?
Uh, yes.
You're welcome to grab the podium, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor Davis and council members. I'm here representing Safe Passage. Safe Passage has been serving victims and survivors of domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking since 1977. We work tirelessly to educate people in the schools, jails, juvenile detentions, and businesses throughout our community about how to prevent violence. Safe Passage serves the entire northern five counties, and I proudly serve as the current board president for Safe Passage. My name is Megan Lorenz. This year, we have received 1,016 Crisis Line helpline calls. We have sheltered 2,617 nights, served over 200 children with forensic interviews and counseling, taught healthy relationship classes to over 2,000 students, and responded to 91 hospital calls and advocated for 401 victims facing their abusers in court. We'd welcome an invitation to educate in your place of business, school, or church about how to talk about violence, red flag warning signs, how to respond when someone discloses, and the critical services that Safe Passage offers. As we stand with our community to empower our victims, provide safety, education, and you can connect with us at our website, safepassageid.org, and together, we can help create a community free from violence. Thank you.
Megan, thank you for sharing it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're rolling on to the consent calendar, which consists of approval of October 8th, 2024, city council meeting minutes, approval of Noble Winds Properties for benches, approval of Cable Huston LLP Engagement Letter for Legal Representation, approval of contract with BS&amp;A for cloud-based citywide enterprise resource planning software and migration, approval of High Point Contract for Microsoft 365 and Information Technology Support Services, approval of contract with Structured for Citywide Backup Solutions, approval of Professional Services Agreement with Noah Ida Tech Incorporated for Cloud-Based Email Archiving Solution, acceptance of right-of-way and grants of easement, and acceptance of public infrastructure associated with Carrington Storage Development, acceptance of Justin and Heather Arts Dedication Right-of-Way and a grant of easement, approval of Wyoming Estates First Edition Final Plant, and acceptance of infrastructure, approval of contract with MySite Marketing for Website and Communication Support, and bills for payment. Any motion or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, there's a consent, or there's a motion to approve the consent, and second, is there any need for discussion? Hearing none, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, our next part of our meeting is visitor and public comment. Period Abby, do we have anything?
I have not had any slips turned in.
We have no slips turned in. We will move on for the Arts Commission. Stephanie, you're here to let us know what's going on in the world of arts.
I put together a packet for everybody as well, for some bedtime reading. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stephanie Satterfield, and I'm the Hayden Arts Commission Chair, and I'm excited to present this quarterly report to you. Currently, on the commission, we have me, Vice Chair Nancy Jones, David Lou Cummings, and Lori Carlson, and Terry Lee. We meet the first Wednesday of the month at 3:00, and anybody and everybody is welcome to join us. The Hayden Arts Commission was established by the city council because they recognized the importance of public art for its businesses and citizens. So, let me tell you what we've been up to. The commission is eager to complete the Come Together Bench Program. The benches have been delayed until November due to the company changing owners. Canvas, who we purchased the benches from, is now Noble Winds. Unfortunately, the Fay Classic, which is the bench that kind of looked like a wooden boat, is unavailable, and so, the commission last month voted to replace those with the Bell Bench, which, in your folder, you'll see the different pictures of the benches. Let's see, we will be soon doing a call to artists for design and selection and painting of the benches for the summer. We will be asking our community to sponsor a bench for $2,500, which will pay for supplies in the artwork. We have nine benches. I have four committed donors at this point. So, that's the benches, and we have nine benches, so I need five more donors. The current featured artist displaying in the gallery is a young man named Devin Smith. He drove all the way from Boise to display his art here. Very nice young man, so please take a look at his photography, and artwork is always a fabulous birthday or Christmas gift, so everything's for sale, even though it doesn't have a price on it. The Arts Commission is considering ways to receive public input for future projects and events, in addition to a meet and greet for public to come and share their ideas. The "Dust to Dawn" signs, you're all familiar with those. Those are the signs below the dragonflies when you come into the parking lot. Well, those have become kind of hard to read, and so, I contacted the original artist, and he is going to redo those for us at basically $70 for both of them. So, for $70, I'm hoping the commission will vote for that, and I do have the proof and everything for the next commission meeting, Abby. So, we're really excited about that, and it's also going to, hopefully, he can do two different colors, so they'll be much easier to read than what they are. So, that was exciting. Let's see. We are also actively seeking ways to raise money for public art. Terry Lee, who is on our Arts Commission and is also a world-renowned artist, has offered one of his paintings valued at $10,000 to the commission. So, it's Abby's job to find out how we can accept that money without having to give any of it away. So, hopefully, that will help pay for some of our future projects that we have in mind. We are discussing undertaking an Art Day in the Park or Festive Something in the Park Day, a one-day event with several activities for 2025 to also help raise money and art awareness as well. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our youth program this year because we did not have the participation. However, it was kind of our fault, too, because we didn't get started on it as soon as we should have, and so, we had very limited time. So, lesson learned, we are now, planning now, for next summer youth program, and hopefully, we'll have a good turnout, and it will be a good program. So, briefly, a couple of the things that we're doing that you can look through your packets later, of course, the Come Together Bench Program, the Fourth Street Retaining Wall mural, of course, our ongoing city gallery. We're looking into having staff participate in that, possibly for the fourth quarter, the Youth Performing Arts Program, criteria for future roundabouts, a public art survey, and our 2025 calendar. And I thank you, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does anyone have questions?
Yes, Matt.
I do. Thank you for the work you do, by the way.
Yeah.
I noticed that, these aren't marked pages, but you have blue stars where these benches are proposed to be located. Is that how I'm seeing this?
Yes.
Okay, so are those all public right-of-ways?
Yes, well, one is not. One is on the, go ahead, Abby, thank you.
So, the council approved a contract with a, a no-cost contract with a surveyor to do easements for two of the locations, and those locations are in front of Coffey Meister and in front of the, or on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency property, just north of City Hall in the parking lot, and we'll be working with those property owners to secure those easements for the public art. But all the rest of them are, yes, in the public right-of-way.
Okay, the reason why I bring that up is that I really like what Coeur d'Alene does. They provide a location or a pad for artists to display their artwork, and of course, it has to be outside, and they get a commission if that artwork is sold. So, a way for maybe the commission to, our art commission to get some money would be to do the same thing, and why I ask about the right-of-way, I mean, if you can do it for benches, hopefully, we could do it for art, so I would just make a suggestion.
I think that's a fabulous suggestion, and I will take it back to the commission. I also, Coeur d'Alene and several cities around the nation do a 1% project for art as well, and I don't have all the details on it, but it's basically 1% of what a construction engineer, what an engineer costs, the 1% of that would go towards public art. And the city of Coeur d'Alene does it, but anyway, we are looking at other ways, you know, different ways to raise art, and the benches are going to be located between Hayden Avenue and Santa Avenue. I am kind of pushing for one a little more north on Government Way in front of the property that the city owns, the two acres by the old Hayden Lake Elementary. So, we have a lot of walkers there.
I will mention about that idea with building a platform, the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency may, and that's the key, where it may, take a certain percentage of its income towards public art. And why I mention that is that if there's some infrastructure needed to put art on, they would be a possible funding source for you to build the pads or put electricity in for the light or whatever. But again, the idea is to take a private artist who could display, and they sell it, and the city makes money on that.
Right. Well, and we, too, Hayden Homes generously donated $10,000 for bench pads, pads for the benches, however, that is not the cost of all of it. So, the person that would probably be able to educate you best on that would be our liaison, Ms. Abby Sanchez. So.
Thank you. Tom, did you have something?
Yeah. Would you mind restating how much you're still looking for in private donations?
Well, we're, we're asking for $2,500. 500 of it is for the artist's supplies, because they can't just bring their paints, it's a specific paint and sealer that they have to have for the benches to make them weatherproof and such, and then 2,000 goes to the artist. But what's really neat about it is the benches will have two barcodes, and one will be about the artist and one will be about the donor. So, anyway, I can't reveal who my four are at as of yet, but they have confirmed and committed.
But you need five more at, at $2,500 each.
Mm-hmm, at $2,500.
And how are you pursuing those donations?
Well, so far, it's just been, if I go in and do business somewhere, I'll just bring it up that we're doing this, and then I started getting phone calls from people. One of the arts, one of the Hura members wants to do one in her husband's honor. And so, yeah, so it's just been really great. So, we were going to put, well, and we may still be putting out a letter to the businesses and to the public, but I'm hoping that if people keep calling and wanting to do this for their legacy or for a loved one or whatever, that we won't even have to put a call out to the community to help us with this.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I just briefly went through the packet here, and I don't believe, I heard you talk about the mural on Fourth Street?
Yeah, well, that's just something that we are looking at, and isn't that cool?
Yeah, that's nice.
So, if you want to know more about it, join us at the November Arts Commission meeting at 3:00. The artist that put this together, this is what they're talking about, this is a Fourth Street wall that's ugly, and this is what the artist has come up with. And he will be coming to the Arts Commission as a guest speaker to answer our questions and talk to us about that.
Local person or?
He is local.
Stephanie, can I make one small?
We have so many local famous and just local artists that are amazing, and I thank you, council, for putting Lori Carlson, she is not only an artist, she is an author, and man, she just came in running, she's kind of taken over the youth program and is going to get it going, so, yeah, so we're really excited to have her, and thank you for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for everything you're doing. I was wondering, can you tell me more about the youth program coming up? What does that look like?
Well, it's, it's in the infancy stages. Right now, Lori is getting, has spoken with Daniel Comley, who used to work with the, what is it, the CT, is it CT, the Christian Youth, CYT? Thank you, program, and he does a lot of other youth programs as well, from performing arts to music to plays, whatever. So, right now, we're talking to him, or Lori is, and hopefully, we'll get more information. He had some questions for us that I asked all the commissioners to answer and then come back at the November meeting with, and so, we'll go over them, and so, we're really trying hard to get this going now and not wait until spring and the 11th hour this time. So, we had a lot of turnover as well on the commission last year, so unfortunately, the youth program suffered because of it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Thank you for the work you do for the city.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Uh-huh.
All right, we are moving on to unfinished business. Our first item is to conclude the business associated with the One Place Church Annexation. There are four motions, I believe, we need to decide. The council will decide to conclude the annexation of a property currently just west of the existing Hayden border. So, the first one is 5A2, a resolution to adopt the One Place Church Annexation Agreement. Council have any discussion, or would they like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I would like to, my motion is to approve the One Place Church Annexation Agreement. That would be one, I, or A, 5A1.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 5A2, this is the resolution to adopt the One Place Church Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Is there any discussion required, or would someone like to make a motion? Ed?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution adopting One Place Church Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Okay, our third item is an action item for One Place Church Annexation Ordinance. So, this is the ordinance that binds the agreement and amendment.
I'm going to bring up two motions for that.
That is true. Hold on real quick, let me get my. All right, there is a procedure for adopting ordinances, I just failed to remember that. Okay, so for this ordinance, it's normally read on three different dates unless the council opts to adopt an ordinance by suspending the rules. So, the first one is a call to motion to read the ordinance by title only, suspending the rule of reading it in full on three separate dates, and to approve the first reading.
Second.
May we get a roll call vote on the?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll read, an ordinance of the city of Hayden and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the annexation of approximately 47.95 acres of land located within the shared tier area of city impact directly west of North Hutter Road and directly north of West Prairie Avenue, more commonly known as parcel number 0-6360-20-064-AA, providing zoning of property so annexed as commercial, providing for amendment to the official zoning map, providing severability, and providing an effective date hereof. Okay, so the motion has, or the ordinance has been read by title only, and now call for a motion to adopt the ordinance on having passed its first reading by title only and that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
All right, we're through that one. And the last one is a, an action item to accept the dedication of right-of-way associated with the One Place Church Annexation. Is there any need for discussion, or someone wants to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the One Place dedication of right-of-way for the One Place Church.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
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 We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion made? Hearing none, maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to item 5B, which is an action item to consider resolution of adopting a process for council's use of a consent calendar. For the public last meeting, council deliberated on the process used to manage items presented on our consent calendar. As a result of this discussion, our staff was tasked to present a resolution to capture the details carried in the majority vote. Tonight's agenda item is to consider adopting the resolution as the city staff has drafted it and established the process for council's use of a consent calendar going forward. I'm going to ask council, as this issue was discussed for an hour, two weeks ago, and everyone made their thoughts on this matter clear, I'm going to ask you to please limit remarks tonight to any new information or please indicate that your position has not changed. So with that, who would like to speak first?
Mr. Mayor? So I emailed you, copied counsel and city administrator on an email exchange I have with a colleague in Post Falls.
Copy legal counsel, not city council.
Did I say?
You just said council, so I was just.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And this council member from Post Falls had reached out to me unsolicited, had watched the deliberations online, and then went back and sought opinion from their lawyer, who services we contract. And they provide, he provided his reading, which conveniently supports my position on this. And I don't know if everyone on the council has received a copy, but I did not send it to them to avoid a serial meeting. So I don't know if everybody's seen it or not. I can go ahead and read excerpts from it or just digest the bottom line.
I think you've indicated it matches your discussion, talking points from last meeting. I think that's sufficient for me at least.
Okay. I also want to point out, I got a compliment from somebody who attended the last, the last meeting, who was, thought it was one of the best meetings they'd ever attended.
I'm sorry?
Because of the deliberations.
I understand. No, I'm serious. I was just doing a little humor there. Very good. Okay.
So I have to ask, does everybody get, did everybody get a copy of it? No?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, you said you were gonna, shall I read out the excerpts from it or?
Again, if you want to. I think if you said they matched what you talked about just two weeks ago, we understood. If there's specifics.
Okay, I didn't, okay, I didn't want to.
I will share.
At a respective time.
I can certainly make.
No, I'll just, I'll just.
Yeah, grab an excerpt or two.
Okay.
Did you just read the quote that starts with "based on"?
Yes, this comes from Field Harrington, Post Falls attorney. He says, "Based on this, a single council member has the ability to request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for further discussion. No formal motion or second is required for this request. The reasoning behind this is that consent calendar items are presumed to have unanimous consent, and the objection or request of one member is sufficient to indicate a lack of unanimity, which moves the item into the agenda, regular agenda for further discussion. This process allows for flexibility and ensures that no items are quote unquote, not my words, words of my colleague, rammed through without proper consideration."
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
I will, if you don't mind a comment, I realize that other cities may do things a certain way. I will share with you my observation that every city is unique. For example, if you were to look at the consent calendar for a typical meeting in the city of Coeur d'Alene, you'll find that their city council has arguably provided a lot more trust and confidence in city staff. The number of items on their consent calendar is minuscule compared to ours. Every detail of our city's business is run through council. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying if we're going to contrast to compare cities, I'd rather us not cherry pick a point when it's advantageous to one person's perspective. That's all.
Fair enough. And I'll just say I'm open to that conversation later on if we want to revise what actually goes on the consent calendar, as you alluded to with CDI.
Right. Because I mean, you've been on city council nine months and everyone else has been on city council for years. And I'd like to think that the city's not, what was the term you used? Rammed through?
Yes.
That we're not putting.
Not my choice of words, okay?
That we're not putting anything ever on, to the best of our ability, on consent with the intention of running it through without.
And I recognize that that is the respect we hold up for each other.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess a comment on it specifically related to, it looks like the resolution that was prepared by staff, if I'm not mistaken, section two, where it talks about request to remove consent item, and then moving down to, after the start of the meeting, any council member can make a request through a motion by a council member and approved by a majority of the council to remove any item from the consent in the following ways. One, by a motion to remove the item from consent agenda and immediately place on the existing agenda under new business. Two, by a motion to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered at a future meeting. And three, by a motion to break apart the consent agenda into multiple decisions. And I think that does a very good job of giving council the flexibility at the moment and depending on the issue and the feelings of each council member to place it in one of those three options. I, I, I think that's a good way to go. Again, you know, as, as you just said and I'll reiterate it, every city has their own, does their own thing and, and the like. I'm, I'm very concerned from my almost three years now in the council of.
I'm good.
Individual, for lack of a better term, agendas ending up in multiple hours long discussions, as we had, I believe, last time regarding this issue. And, you know, I looked up the term consent. And as Councilmember Schaefer said, presume to be, but consent does not mean unanimous. Consent means just to agree to do something, basically. And doesn't have any, none of the definitions I could find, find said anything about unanimous or majority or any numerical or percentage applied to the word consent. But again, when we get back to the ability to work together and trust each other, I would think that these three options give us the opportunity to work out any potential situations that come about related to this.
All right, thank you, Ed. And just to clarify, I appreciate Ed keeping on the feed. We're looking for feedback on the resolution as written. We're not looking to rehash the meeting we had two weeks ago where we were discussing our philosophies on how consensus run.
Mayor, I just have a question concerning the memo here.
Yes, Matt.
Just a little confusion. Maybe we could clear this up. It says, "Staff does not recommend a motion or action on this item. You just want feedback. Is that what we're looking for?"
Yeah, at this point, the direction that was provided to staff was to prepare the motion, or to prepare the resolution. So with that, we're not necessarily recommending one thing. We're just trying to ensure that the way it was produced is responsive to the majority vote that was provided. So I don't necessarily know if there's a recommendation from staff. It's mainly just guidance on whether we hit the mark or not.
So it shows on the agenda this is an action item. What's the action that we would actually be taking or possibly?
You theoretically could adopt the resolution if you felt that staff prepared it in accordance with your direction.
Okay, that's, okay, okay, got it.
So again, I'm not making a recommendation one way or the other.
Other comments on the resolution as drafted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, so I don't agree with the draft as written. I, I would, I believe that we live in a republic and we have a representative government. And we are each elected to represent our neighbors in order to efficiently run the city.
Sandy, I don't want to cut you off.
You are cutting me off.
Well, what I, all right, let me try different words then. I would rather us not use this time for a political speech. We're here to discuss the resolution. You like it, you don't like it, what you like about it, what you don't like about it. But discussing government as a philosophy doesn't get us to getting this action completed.
I beg your pardon, but as I was given the floor, and as given the floor, I have, I have the right to speak, and this is an important issue. And we were not given a memo saying, you know, this is a yes or no idea. So.
Well, right, we're just here to discuss the resolution as it was drafted.
Right. And there are many things on here that I would like to bring light to before we move forward with it. So.
Okay, great. So what's, what's, what's in the resolution that you would like to change?
So, um, so a large part of our meetings are, are in the consent calendar. So everything that's in the consent calendar is very important. We all seem to agree on certain points. We agree that the calendar is intended to save time in a meeting, that the mayor and the staff build the consent calendar. Items placed on it should be routine and non-controversial, and there should be a process to remove items to be addressed later. What we don't agree on is that, one, items in the consent calendar are passed in one motion. So in all of my research, I've never seen a consent calendar split up in order to vote on it in separate motions as is being proposed today. We don't agree on who decides if something is controversial or not. In a representative government, if any one of us thinks it's controversial, then it is. Even if a majority vote can be taken to keep that item in the consent calendar, that doesn't take away the fact that it's no longer routine and non-controversial. What we have in that case is a suppressive and non-representative government. We don't agree on unanimous consent. Consent calendar should be passed by unanimous consent. A consensual agreement by definition means that all parties agree. And this is a one, this is the one time in an agenda when we all should agree. And we don't agree on the process on how to remove an item. A single council member should have the ability to request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for further discussion. No formal motion or second should be needed for this request. If each member is treated equally and able to remove anything to be discussed later, it will keep the consent calendar from being a rubber stamp or letting things get railroaded. So I'd just like to say I've done extensive research on this topic. I've listened to numerous training videos, watched many city council meetings from other cities, and studied how many different cities in Idaho use the consent calendar. And one of my favorite agendas says, "Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed for discussion and made a part of the regular agenda at the request of a member of the council. Any request shall be made after the consent calendar is read and before action is taken." And this is from the city of Burley, where Brett Boyer is now city manager. And in my research, I've rarely seen times when this was done incorrectly. But one time, just recently in 2022 in Pocatello.
Sandy?
Yes.
Again, is there feedback for the resolution as written?
Yes, I would like to show that this does have problems attached to it. So I would like to quote Roger Bray from Pocatello City Council. They had a council meeting where a council member was denied the opportunity to remove something from the consent calendar. And he said, "The anything goes procedures that cast aside rights and respect for convenience or expediency come at the expense of inclusion and fairness. The most recent strategy is to prevent discussing and thus verifying the spending of the public's money. It's not something we take lightly." And then he went on to talk about how unjust tactics were being used to silence council members and challenge constitutionally guaranteed rights. He also said that such actions fly in the face of how America values representative government. So therefore, I propose that we follow the procedure set out by our predecessors in ordinance 214 and allow representative government to thrive. Thank you.
Matt, anything, Ed? Thank you. So council, this is an action item and the staff has fulfilled your direction to draft a resolution. And I thank you for those members who gave specific feedback on the wording of the resolution. And now staff is asking, or I'm asking, what the body would like us to do.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question of council, of legal council?
Sure.
Okay. I would just like to know, fond as legal counsel, when a consent calendar comes up for a vote and not everyone is agreeing on it, can the mayor break the tie or is it a majority of council vote? This is just a matter of.
So if you have a tie on the consent calendar, I would be asking you at that point as legal counsel to take the items that have that much of a disagreement and move those to separate new business items. I, I would ask you to do that. If it's a 2-2 tie, if it's a 3-1, it's a different, it's a different conversation.
Okay. So would that be a precedent towards keeping our, our ordinance 214 and just having items taken off that would be confrontational or not routine?
So when your mayor sets the agenda and he puts items on consent, he doesn't know what's in controversy until he hears from you in the public meeting?
Sure.
Unless you see it, reach out to him ahead of time. But when it's set and when it's posted, he, he would have no way of knowing what you're thinking.
Okay.
So that's why this conversation is important. I guess I'm not understanding your question about precedent.
Yes, if, if, if something is on the consent calendar and the majority of the council is preventing a council, a single council member from taking something off for discussion.
Sure.
And then there's a, a split vote, a 2-2 vote on the consent calendar, then can the mayor break that tie?
So, so I just answered your question with, if it looks in that discussion where the question has been asked to remove it, and that discussion reveals that it's a 2-2 split, I would be recommending that you make it a separate action item. So that's number one. Okay. Number two, I haven't known this council to ever prevent a person from having a discussion on a consent item. And so I guess I'm not understanding. We've had, we've had consent items separated out and voted on separately. We have had consent items moved to new business. We've had robust discussion over just whether or not to remove it off of consent. So I guess I'm not quite understanding where, other than just, there's just a disagreement.
Right.
I mean, I certainly understand the position that nobody should be silenced and you should be able to express your views. I, I just, I haven't seen the process not allow someone to express their view in relationship to consent.
Can I add?
I can affirm.
Yes.
Based on what Councilman Schaefer has sent to you tonight, and the mayor followed that up well, most of the other cities do just have a request by any single council member can remove an item to a new business item or to some future agenda. It can go either way.
Okay, so.
Did you, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I was just wondering if, lost my train of thought. Here, hold on. Yes, there have been times when I have asked for something to be removed from the consent calendar, and it was treated as amending the agenda. And there was a, a motion and a vote.
That's correct.
That kept that item on the consent calendar. So in the past, our city has treated a consent calendar as amending the agenda.
You, you are correct. The process that, that we as staff inherited was a process where you required a motion and a second to remove from consent. What I was referring to was that even in that discussion of whether or not to remove it, there seems to have been robust discussion about what a person's concerns with that. it, there seems to have been robust discussion about what a person's concerns with that item was. And so I'm, I mean, it's not for me to tell you what your process should be. You guys have to come to that agreement tonight. But I have not seen a situation, other than some disagreements between you and the mayor every once in a while, where actually somebody's been told, "You can't speak because it's not consent." I guess that's what I was trying to say.
So, okay, so again, addressing the idea of a vote on a consent calendar where there's a tie.
There will not be a tie. I will ask you to remove it to a new action item so that there is not a tie.
Okay, so then how is that process different from keeping ordinance 214? Where something is taken off the consent calendar at the asking, wouldn't that just shorten the idea of a meeting? So I did send in a proposal for ordinance 214 to be presented tonight. Lisa, did you get that email?
I did.
From me? Is that something, I would like to show that to the other council members for their. So.
Would that go on a future meeting? In other words, tonight's agenda item is to discuss a resolution. If council doesn't, but if council doesn't want the resolution as is, if they want to defer, we can certainly continue the conversation.
Well, you are correct. A separate proposed resolution should have been posted as part of the packet for the public to see as well.
Yep.
So that would need to go on a future agenda. Either both resolutions go on, there's some direction from council tonight for redrafting. It almost sounds like, I'll just say it, it almost sounds like the underlying action item needs to go back on the agenda. But that's what the request is being made.
It's all the council. That's, I'm just trying to keep us on point tonight. We've got a draft resolution.
Yes.
Council can elect to adopt it. Council can elect to consider additional comments drafted by council members. I'm not here to drive that one way or the other, but I do want to close this action item tonight after enough discussion's been had, and I don't want to open it up to new things that are going to take time and, like you said, should have been posted to the public.
Well, and the underlying decision was made at the last meeting. So if somebody, if you have council requesting that the underlying decision be discussed and revoted on, that needs to be on a future agenda.
Mayor, I do have two things.
Yes.
And I know the answer to this question, I was just going to ask it for the record anyway. The resolution as proposed here does meet all Idaho law.
Yes.
I'm not trying to.
There's not a specific law on how to handle consent. So there's general process and procedure, and there's some definitions of consent, but consent is born out of.
But it isn't conflict with any law.
Operation over time. It's not conflicting.
Okay, that's all, and I'm not, and then my question to you, Sandy, can you tell us the time that you've been here, which is almost three and a half years? Have you ever been prevented from discussing a consent item?
No, we've been able to discuss it in the consent calendar, but the idea of a consent calendar is to, but we've been able to discuss it but not vote on it separately.
But you haven't been prevented from representing your ideas in that discussion. Is that true or false?
No, I've been able to speak. Yeah, I have been able to speak, but I have not been able to pull it off and vote separately on it. And so then I have voted no on the consent calendar a couple of times because of that.
But you've been able to discuss it to your heart's content?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So counsel, is there any action or any motion that would like to be made tonight in support of?
I honestly don't know what it is that we have leeway on doing.
You could vote to adopt the resolution as drafted. You could direct the staff to change elements of the drafted resolution.
And then table that until the next meeting.
And then discuss those changes at the next meeting to make sure we get it right, because we don't want to rush anything through.
I would like to offer one issue that I see is we're trying to use a resolution to modify an ordinance, which is problematic. So you have an ordinance 214 that is codified in a resolution.
Codified.
You have an ordinance 214 that under the legal definition of an ordinance would be looked at as codification. I recognize the timing and all the issues, but you should not be using a resolution to modify an ordinance. So that's number one.
But we certainly could adopt a resolution to cancel an existing ordinance. I'm sorry, we could draft an ordinance to cancel an existing ordinance and then use the resolution as it should be for administrative processes.
That is correct.
And I'm pointing that out because it's my understanding that really the running of a meeting shouldn't be an ordinance, it should be a resolution.
That is correct, that's a process.
So counsel could direct staff to develop an ordinance to close ordinance.
I would repeal 214 specifically in its entirety, and then draft a resolution for your process.
Right, that should be the proper way to do it.
I'll make that motion.
Well.
Just as you said.
We didn't agendize.
Yeah, well, we'd have to do that the next meeting.
So you could motion to table this issue, put it on the next agenda for.
And have this discussion over again.
You will.
Can we approve this resolution anyway?
You can, you can proceed.
Yeah, my motion is.
I'm telling you where the, and then you could still repeal 214.
Yeah, okay, so then I.
But not until the next meeting.
Right, that's fine. I'll make the motion, we approve the resolution as written.
Okay, there's a motion to table, there's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion being made?
I'd like to amend the motion to include the voting, that if it's, if there is a two-to-two split, that items would be pulled and to just make it clear what a split in the vote looks like.
Okay, so the process would be then to vote on the motion that Matt has made and then vote on the agenda?
Well, she made a motion to amend the motion.
Okay, so that's a little different. So that comes first then?
Yeah, you have to vote on her motion to amend the existing motion.
Okay, so just for clarity, Abby, would you clarify what the amendment is so that council understands before they vote?
If I could please ask Councilmember White to restate her amendment?
Yes, that there be some wording added to the resolution explaining the voting process. And if there was a split vote of two-to-two, that we would be asked to remove something from the agenda.
So I think what you're trying to say is if there's a two-to-two tie on whether or not to remove an item from the consent calendar, it would automatically become a new business action item?
No. Well, that too, that as well. But also if the vote on the consent calendar was two-to-two, how is that tie broken?
Entire consent?
The entire consent calendar. So there would be two votes then, thank you for clarifying. So if there's a split vote on if something should come off of the consent calendar, how's that rectified? And if the consent calendar itself has a split vote?
So those are two separate issues, and I don't think the vote on the consent, underlying consent calendar is actually identified in your current resolution, so I think that would be.
That's why I would want that added to the resolution.
It reads, I know we're in the middle of a motion, I'm sorry, Abby, but the way the resolution reads analysis is, after the start of the meeting, "Any council member may make a request or a motion by the council member and approved by the majority of the council to remove any item from the consent agenda in the following ways," and then proceeds with three, six, three ways and three examples. So my guess is there would have to be a new section that talks about.
But you just reworded that section to say in the event that two councilmen wish to remove an item from the agenda and then list the three?
No, I think what.
There's two separate, she's asking for two separate issues. One is removal, second is underlying vote, is the actual vote on consent.
I guess.
I can't imagine a situation where we would ever get to a two-to-two tie on a consent calendar, ever. We would have so much discussion leading up to that that would elicit.
All right, so regardless of that, an amendment has been proposed, is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment itself?
I'm going to opine here, forgive me. I know, Mr. Mayor, that you want to stay laser-focused on our mission here, and I respect that. I just want to observe, I can sense the frustration from the deists on this, that if we just kept with the original language of 214, we would have, today was a perfect example of a consent calendar, where everybody got a long list of items, they did their homework, they came in, boom, 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 all four of us voted to approve, it was done. If, God forbid, it ever came up where there was one item that a councilperson wished to remove and said, "I'd like this removed," okay, it's moved on to new business. Then again, boom, 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 we would have a vote and the consent agenda would be done, and this item, whatever it is, would go on to regular business, and it'd be all behind us. But now what we're proposing is this minutia of if this and conditional statements for that before we finally get this item off of the consent agenda. And it kind of drives me nuts, because the original solution was simple, period. And that is my soapbox, I'm done.
Understand, but last week, arguments were made against the giving one councilperson the power to rip anything and everything out of the consent. And I'm not here to rehash two weeks ago, I'm just saying there are two sides to this. There are multiple perspectives and opinions, and so.
And we had those arguments, and I'm not going to restate anything I said last week, it all stands.
So we have a motion, a second. So the first vote will be unless there is additional discussion on the amended motion.
I guess I would ask for some time to bring back the resolution.
Well, let's see if the amendment.
I don't think passing the resolution with perceived language in it that aren't there for you guys to review is wise. I think it should be remanded back to staff to bring forward that resolution.
But do we need that language? I mean, legal councils say, "Well, there's a two-to-two tie, we're just going to, she's going to say, "We're going to have it removed, and we'll have it as a separate action item." I mean, we're making very, I've never seen a two-to-two tie in nine years. Not that it can't happen, but I think we're spending a lot of time on things that, they are concerning, but I think we've made it too complex in our discussion. So I'm going to call for the question.
I'll second that. Call for what?
So the motion, the pending motion right now is the motion to amend the underlying motion.
Right.
Just be clear where you're at.
Yep, so again, focus our discussions on the amendment itself.
I'd like to address.
I call for the question.
Second.
We have a second.
What's question? I don't understand.
Well, we don't really do Robert's rules here, so some people, that's going to confuse some folks, so it may be in plain English. Matt, what are you trying to do?
Well, I think we've had enough discussion, it's time to vote on it.
He wants to call for the vote on the motion to.
Okay, that's, all right, fine, Sandy, go ahead and make.
I would like to make a comment on what Council President Roder just said. There was a two-to-two vote, it was about a year ago, and it was you and I voted no on the consent calendar. And that's when there were two contracts on the consent calendar that you and I could not get out, and we were prevented from having those taken out. We had a 45-minute to 50-minute discussion on the consent calendar, and you and I voted no. So I would like to let you know that.
Did the mayor break the tie? See, Abby's saying yes.
He did.
So what's the problem?
All right, so you guys have made your points, so.
I want to make a comment here. Sorry, sorry.
What's the line, you're killing me, Smalls?
Well, hey, look.
Death by a thousand cuts.
It's unfortunate that we're sitting here doing this. This is just my own opinion, okay? I watch Coeur d'Alene, I watch Post Falls, and I watch all the different ones, and we're starting to look, we're getting towards looking like a couple of other entities right now that are a mess, that are, that have turned into ideological soapboxes. And I've said it already about this, we're doing this right now because in my, almost three years now, I've experienced people using this as an opportunity to present their ideological positions in what I feel is not in the best interest of the roughly 18,000 to 20,000 members of this community. The concern which comes up frequently does deal with ideological opinions and desires, and it's not, in my opinion, what is in the best interest of the community. All you have to do is look at social media and seeing how these things are being played out on social media when things don't go the way to rally people who have no idea, they don't check, they don't know how to check, but they get jacked about it, and it's really divisive. And I'm, it's just so old, it's getting real old. Like I said, my concern is we're starting to look like NIC in the library network. We're getting there. And this is ridiculous because of the ideological issues that are related to what's going on. This isn't about what's best for the community. This is about groups trying to push themselves and their values onto everybody else. And that's not what we're here to do.
All right, let's get the meeting focused again, thank you. So the vote is first for the amendment for proposed additional language. So if you vote yes, then you want that language added, which?
Which the language, if I understood correctly, let me restate it. If there's a two-to-tie, or it appears there's a two-to-division on whether or not to remove an item from consent, that it would automatically be removed. And that if it looks like there's going to be a two-to-tie on the.
Consent itself.
Vote of the consent agenda, that the items where there's not unanimity would automatically be removed.
Okay, so that is the motion. Maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DePreez?
No.
Council President Roder?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Okay, so now we're back to the original.
Can he vote on that?
Yeah.
Can he? So he can vote to say that he, that he has the right to divide the vote?
It was a motion to amend, so he has a right to vote on a motion to amend a motion.
Okay.
So now we're back to Matt's original motion, which was to adopt the resolution as drafted. Is there any additional discussion on Matt's motion? I'm hearing not, maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Moving on to item 6A, new business nomination of individuals to the Veterans and Historic All right, I lost my connection. Somebody has the commissioners and wants to kick this off, please go ahead and do that.
You want me to read the memorandum?
You have to read the memorandum, you could just say the name and the commission, that would be fine, and then we'll make a motion if you all elect to approve.
You want me to do Veterans or Historic first?
Yeah, I don't care. I wish my computer was working tonight better.
The following individual is selected to serve on the Veterans Commission, Mr. Jeffrey Snell. Do I read out his address or just?
No, that's fine.
Okay, term of appointment, October 22, 2024 to December 31, 2026.
Okay, council have any discussion, or is there a motion need to be made?
A motion to approve said individual.
Okay, is a motion a second? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Maybe we get a vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember, Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Tom, if you'd do me a favor and get the second one, please.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
The following individual is selected to serve on the Historic Commission, Mr. Ransom Storm. Term of appointment, October 22, 2024 to December 31, 2024.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, that's, is that correct?
No. Well, actually it is, I'm sorry.
I read it as.
That, that should, so that the, I'll call it the bill or the position he's in has a turnover date of January of next year, so the person will be reappointed in January.
Correct.
And it's just so we stagger our commissioners.
Is he filling somebody's term or something?
Yes, we had somebody, somebody left, and so this person is a, okay. So yes, you read that correctly. Would anyone like to consent to this appointment?
Can I motion to consent my reading of the, I propose that we approve Mr. Ransom Storm as a term appointment to the Historic Commission.
Thank you.
I second that.
Alright, thank you, we have motion and a second, is there any discussion related to the motion? Hearing none, maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to six B, action item is to consider changes to public works position on the kinds and levels chart. We are for the public, we are recommending changes to our public works function workforce structure following a tenured employee's retirement. These changes are necessary to recruit and retain highly qualified people to oversee the city's largest projects and to ensure accountability from the private development sector.
I'm gonna ask Sean if he can kind of do the kinds and levels discussion and then we'll cover kind of the current... So ultimately, what we're doing, what you are approving is this piece of paper here as it will stand. You can see that Wade, as he retires after thirty-eight years of service, we have had to take and parcel out a lot of what he does. He does an enormous amount for the city, so our public works crew member for streets and parks, they're gonna have added duties and as well as our public works technicians. So we're elevating them up on the kinds and level chart, which means that their grade, the pay levels that they get are going to go up as well. And then we're, we're changing the position that Wade currently holds as the superintendent of operations for public works. And we're going to probably elevate it and have a little bit more education, it's gonna become a little bit more technical in nature and a little less boots on the ground, and so we're gonna elevate that as well. And then our public works director, to keep it relevant within our current market, we really need to do something with that one as well. So those are the things that you're seeing change. If you look at the color, the color shows where it was and where it's going, and yellow is going from yellow to yellow and green to green and whatever else color. So any questions on kinds and levels and why we're doing it? Ultimately, when we do these changes, the change to budget is going to be, we're gonna save a little bit of money because we are canceling a position that we currently have opened for an engineering and training, and EIT is what it's called. And our EIT has been posted for two years now with no real strong applicants, so we're canceling that position and gonna move this direction. At some point in time, if we see that we're continuing to struggle with the administrative processes within public works or engineering, we might be coming back to rework through that, but at this point, this makes sense. And it's gonna support then the greater function that Lisa's got here for the organization of public works going forward and our growth.
So just for means of background, city staff is first gonna look to efficiencies before we look to grow government in the form of additional staff. And we're doing that with this reorganization or proposed reorganization. So as proposed right now or shown right now, this is, and I'm guessing the EIT position that hasn't been filled would have been under engineering, so I'm gonna, that's why I put that there. You'll see that we have kind of two different levels. The reason I colored the sewer and the deputy of operations, I summarized his title, so it wasn't really long on here, is really just kind of the color of money, if we think about it that way. So green would be our general fund budget, orange is our enterprise funds. And then you see underneath that how it currently is set up. As mentioned by Sean, the EIT is unfilled, so we're looking to absorb that back into our overall budget and redistribute the duties and, and then elevate our pay so that we can arguably retain and get good people in here and keep them. So the proposed level looks like this. The other thing I want to prepare council for is the reality of where we're going in growth. We're essentially through this process trying to create bandwidth at the administrative level. Right now, we have one director managing majority or a lot of the admins side of the public works. The public works technician has absorbed a number of those duties, not by, by description but by design. And so again, why we're elevating those to acknowledge the additional work, not only that they have taken on as part of their day-to-day duties to assist the department, but also because we are shedding some of the operational issues that were covered by the employee that's leaving to the other relevant jobs. So the super, we're elevating those job descriptions from crew leads, if you'll remember back here, we have right now park crew lead and streets crew lead, we're elevating those to superintendents, and the purpose of that is really to ask more of the day-to-day operations within that department. And with that, of course, asking for their kinds and levels to be relevant or adjusted for the additional work that we're asking of them. You'll see this kind of orange over here, if you remember, we had the sewer collections operator in the previous chart. We anticipate and are planning for the growth of this to include the, the treatment plan. So what is that gonna look like and how is that gonna be organized, excuse me, in a way that allows for, again, the administrative functions to work more seamlessly? And we've, again, visualizing what that looks like, shown here. So this is a, a plan not only for reaction to certain employees transitioning into their next phase of life, but also for the realization of what's coming. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Lisa?
Yeah.
At the present moment, with EITs crossed out, but are all of those positions either filled or projected movement to fill them?
Yeah, so we, with the approval of the kinds and levels tonight, will look to advertise this position as the deputy public works director with the current job description that we have provided to the mayor. So that position upon retirement will be open for fill, so yes and no.
So we would be bringing someone from the outside or will someone inside the, have the opportunity to promote up?
Definitely both scenarios will likely occur, we'll likely advertise that anybody can apply. There are some specific skillsets that we're looking for with this job because we're asking for that administrative relief. And I believe that, you know, anybody internally that wishes to apply will be viewed equally amongst other applicants as well.
So it's one position base that will need to be advertised in or filled through...
Possibly, and maybe more if we end up in, you know, bringing up from within the possibility that we'd have another.
Feel bad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do want to make a comment that I think is worth acknowledging, and that is that the rate of pays as we consider them across the overall board here and the removal of the EIT position does leave us with a potential for a cost savings, but also the likelihood that we'll, next budget year, be looking at whether or not we are still in need of that position. But the cost savings overall is roughly right now about thirty-nine, twenty-nine thousand dollars, excuse me. So we, we feel, again, first thing we want to do before we grow government is look to efficiencies and then be back before you with what that looks like after we test to see if it's efficient. So that, again, questions?
If council doesn't have any more questions, would anybody like to make a motion to adapt the changes to the public works positions on the kinds and levels chart?
Sure. Thanks. I would move to approve the changes to the public works position in the kinds and levels chart.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion as it relates to the motion? Hearing none, maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Moving on to item six C, for the public, the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board, or Harbs, needs our council to adopt or is asking our council to adopt an updated fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget so they can authorize work contracted this past April. Our motion tonight is to support this Harbs budget modification. Is there any discussion on this item or would someone like to make a motion to adopt the revised budget?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the revised budget for the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board.
I believe there's a resolution, so I think the action...
Oh, okay, I retract that, and somebody who has better control of their English than I do can...
Just read the thing on the top.
Okay. I propose that we approve the resolution for a revised draft fiscal year twenty-five budget for the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. Did I get it right?
Second.
Very good, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Is there any discussion on Tom's motion? Maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Alright, moving to our last action item tonight is a discussion, so it's open on how council wishes to task our Public Safety Commission to potentially improve our deputies' service hours reporting. Has been discussed before, well, I'll just leave it at that, I'll let, I'll let council drive the conversation, please. And if it was too vague, basically what we're trying to do is ask you as council, do you want to task the Public Safety Commission to consider additional reporting as it relates to the number of hours deputies spend in Hayden? Yes or no would be quickest, but obviously have thorough discussion.
Well, do you want to go first, Councilmember White? Okay, so the city administrator, Lisa Elport, shared a memo, I'm sifting through my folder right here now, from Scott Haug. Okay, I presume everybody's read it, so I'll just summarize it, basically saying, please don't do this, that we don't need additional micromanaging of our, how we account for our time. And I personally agree with this. I know that when we reach a certain big boy status in our vocations, there's a level of autonomy we have with the people to whom we report where they just assume that we're professional enough to get the job done and it's not necessary to clock in and clock out every minute. Except for lawyers, of course.
Six-minute increments.
Yeah, so that's my take on this.
Okay. Sandy, you add something to add?
I would, I would agree with Councilmember Schaefer on this, that I don't feel it's necessary to impose time chart restrictions on our sheriff's department.
I would ask council, Scott Haug's memo, he was out of town and he's well intentioned, the memo was written not in his position as a PSC commissioner but as a citizen, so I would ask you to, certainly you can take his advice, but to do so under the guise of a citizen and not as somebody who works on the Public Safety Commission. Otherwise, it would be a little unfair because to have one person representing what should be an entire commission is a miscommunication to council, so I'm just gonna clarify that as much as we thank Scott for his opinion.
And I acknowledge that, Mr. Mayor, I, the feelings I expressed, I held before that letter came out, it just affirmed where I stood on things.
Okay. Matt or Ed, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I know, I don't know, a meeting or two ago, I'd asked the council, each member, do you know how many hours that the ten assigned Hayden deputies spend in Hayden? And then there's a follow-up question, do you care? I know Councilmember White said, I don't know and I don't care. And I know that Councilmember Schaefer said, I want to study that some more and kind of figure that out, and Ed said, yes, I don't know, but I would like, I would like to, and he does care. And I, and I sit in the position of, I don't know, there's no one in this room that excluding maybe the, our deputies here that know how many hours, we have a million dollar contract for ten deputies, and I, no one in the city can tell us how many hours that they actually spend in the city of Hayden. And I know, we did receive some reports of January two thousand twenty-four and February, and we had one, one example was one deputy spent one hundred and thirty-seven hours one day in Hayden. We heard that there were glitches, there were numerous glitches. So there was an attempt to give us that information, which I was hopeful would be, we could, would be good, but now we can't because, because there's a glitch in it. So my, my understanding is we have a people of a hundred years of law enforcement experience on our Public Safety Commission, and I would like to ask them to see, is there an effective way, and I want to reiterate this, this is by no means a way to distrust our deputies, that's not the issue. The deputies are being told where to go based on calls, they don't have a choice. But I want to know with, whether they're going outside the city or they're here. And that's my motivation, and I think the task force is actually better equipped because no one on this board or on our council has any law enforcement experience. They're more, they're more apt to come up with an efficient way to give us this reporting. And we're talking about once a month, say, how many hours that the ten deputies spend in Hayden.
Matt, can I ask you a very direct question?
Yes.
If council tasks the PSC, if the PSC comes back and says, this is not a, a level of effort worth tracking, will you guys...
I honor that, I don't know about the rest of it.
So I'm, I'm only pointing now because that might just put this to bed.
Good with that.
Come up a couple times in the past, that might be a way forward as you consider whether you would like to task the PSC or not.
Yeah, so that's the question.
Ed?
Okay, I believe, is that the memorandum that, that Mr. Haug, he, how do you, oh, I'm sorry, he gave us some alternative approaches, I think, is rather than implementing tracking systems, suggest considering other methods that would improve accountability while respecting deputies' needs, expanding the current monthly report to include more detailed information on patrol activities and using or utilizing random audits or spot checks to verify patrol coverage, which would provide assurance within, without burdening deputies with continuous tracking. Thank you. And, and I believe that when we had this discussion last meeting and the meeting before, I, I had talked about, you know, these likes, and I believe Mr. Haug also, these deputies are going all over the place, and yes, they leave the city and they go to court and they go to the jail and they get called, and for them to sit there and be, and be trying to log and whatever there, is just, it is a burden, as he says in there. I, I think those two suggestions, and I guess to cut to the chase, yes, I would like to have the Public Safety Commission maybe discuss some of those options.
Good.
Okay, and I think everybody here is, I think is just...
I'm good with that.
...committed that they come back and they say, hey, you know, it's not worth it, or let's ask them to do this, that we should be appreciative and, and accept the fact like Matt says, they have a hundred years of experience, they've been doing it, and they can probably give us the best recommendation.
Well, we would certainly, since we've heard from all four of you, entertain a motion in support of tasking or not tasking the Public Safety Commission?
So that would be my motion, I'll make the motion that would, we would approve that the Public Safety Commission would look at alternatives for accountability and come back with those recommendations.
Second.
Is that a specific enough motion? I think the, the accountability of law enforcement service hours by Hayden assigned deputies.
Yeah, put that in.
Abby, would you...
Yes.
...remind the motion as soon as, please?
As soon as I get it written up.
Yeah.
I just didn't want the tasking of PSC to be vague.
Okay, so I have a motion to task the Public Safety Commission to look at accountability of law enforcement service hours by Hayden assigned deputy options.
Options, yes.
And then provide a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, and I believe it was seconded?
Yep.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I'm hearing none, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to, we're moving on to reports. Lisa, do you have anything to report?
Hopefully just a brief one, just, I have three things, three points. One, one to make council aware that the city has obtained access to the lake's highway property, and we are beginning that evaluation and assessment of how we're going to move into that, so we'll look forward to bringing forth updates in the future about how that move is going. Our staff is excited and enthused about the move, and so are we here in City Hall. The other item I want to make council aware of is that on December thirtieth at six PM here at City Hall, there is a charrette planned for the Hayden Canyon park design. We want to make sure that...
October, October thirtieth, not December.
Oh, sorry, October, yeah.
You were gonna say Christmas party.
Sorry, just October thirtieth, sorry.
A week from tomorrow.
This is where your brain is two steps ahead of you.
Can I ask, what is a charrette?
A charrette is a, it's a planning... A charrette is a, it's a planning term used to engage the public in an active conversation around several different looks of, maybe some ideas, and.
Never heard that word before. Thank you.
You're now officially, it's at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
October 31st?
October 30th. 30th, excuse me.
30th. Costumes optional.
Thank you for listening to me.
Wednesday, October 30th.
Dress as landscaping.
Or shrub.
Or grumpy old mayor.
And then the last thing is just a community reminder of the placement of election signs. We're getting phone calls daily about public rights-of-way being used as a way to advertise for elections, and we want to make sure that the public is aware that this is not a proper location and that those signs should be placed on private property. So, we will and have been in the past removing those signs where it's obvious that they're located within the right-of-way. So, if you're working with folks and can help get that message out, I would just ask, if we do remove those, we will keep them here, and they can come pick them up.
And only city staff can remove those signs.
So, we keep those signs over at the city shop. There's a place over there.
I'm just saying, they can come here to City Hall.
Alan, do we not own a chipper?
No.
We don't, we don't destroy private property.
I would never suggest that, sir. I just asked a question.
Just wanted to make sure I was clear.
And that would conclude my report, unless there's questions.
Thank you.
I have a question, and it pertains to signage. There are real estate signs that are put in right-of-ways. Are they allowed?
We, that would be probably within our sign code as a small sign, and there are some small signs that are allowed. But I, I'm not, I'm not an expert in the code, so I defer to our.
We got a head shaking side to side down there.
Yeah, we.
You can't put, you can't put signs in, in public right-of-way, and as we find them, we have them, move them out of the right-of-way.
Okay, because I see a lot of them.
Yeah, so, just let us know, and we'll follow up.
Have staff that's out and about, the road crews, park crews, whatever, have they been, I don't know, given authority or asked to come back? If as they drive along, they see things, can they just pick them up, or do they come back and say, hey, you know, Lisa, da-da-da-da, do you want us to, you know?
So, we.
I have an individual's task for the, for the sign, so he's, has, he looks at the maps, determines where it's at, and then removes them on a daily or.
On his own base, he goes out and.
Whatever.
Thank you.
We get phone calls, and if it's egregious enough, we'll remove it at a phone call.
All right. Captain Smart, do you have anything for law enforcement this meeting?
I would entertain any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions for the good captain? Thanks for coming, and as every meeting, thank you for the work you and your deputies do sincerely.
I have a question about the calendar.
Calendar. Which one?
The, so November.
Is it because October is in December?
On November 11th.
Calendar, thank you.
Yeah, the city calendar.
Yes.
The, on November 11th, there's a Veterans Day, the city hall's closed. Is there also a ceremony that day?
Yes, 11 o'clock, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, moving on to 7C, mayor roundtable discussion items. Does any council member have any discussion item?
Sure. Just to, it's been a topic here, the massive overflow crowd we have will appreciate it and the on-air throngs that I'm sure are watching. But Hura has been a topic of discussion, and I attended their workshop on Tuesday or Thursday, whenever they had their last, just the other day. What day was that?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah.
And there's been concern about all the things that they're going to do, and their discussion was related to the property, the Owl Cafe and the, and the house over on Orchard, and the property they own in conjunction with the city. And just to alleviate any concerns that it may become mixed use or any high-density development, they are putting out an RFP, RFQ.
Chocolate.
For design of a city campus, okay? They have no intention of getting involved with mixed use or any property like that. And what was discussing, you never know what's going to come to fruition, but it sounds like, you know, somewhat of a scaled-down McEwen, possibly, where they enlarge the park and amphitheater and facilities and maybe, you know, exercise stations and a trail and things like that. So, they're, they're putting out a request for presentations, I guess, or designs, and I think that's something that should hopefully alleviate a lot of the anxiety. And they made a comment, a couple comments, and I have to conclude that they're correct. And it gets down to kind of what we saw happen here tonight and what we, we see a lot. A comment was made by a Hura board member or two that they want direction from the city. They want the city to say, hey, listen, you know, they want input on that property, but they think, they feel from observation that we're so busy bickering on issues that don't look farther than our nose, and that we should be concerned with what's going to be happening here in 10, 20-plus years down the road, because that's where those type of, or Hura money is most likely going to end up affecting as they help fund and participate in whatever infrastructure, the city park, who knows what, that's going to be there a long time. And it's going to be there hopefully 10, 20, 30, 50 years. And they're not the only ones who, who see that, who are of the opinion that we're not looking very far down the road. And I agree, but I think we need to clean up some things that we've got and move on with more long-term vision.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any discussion items, roundtable?
I just have actually two little things, and this goes back, and forgive me, I wrote this down in my notes, but we spent $390,000 and sent it to Lakes Highway District. Is that our final payment for purchase of the facility?
Just, just for clarity, that was for the purchase of the buildings. So, yeah, the, that is, at this point, our final contribution, unless at some point there's an opportunity to purchase the land, which.
Right, but what, we're committed to Lakes, where we've spent, where that's final payment to Lakes.
For now, yes. Unless, of course, there's a land acquisition that we can pursue.
Right, but that's the county owns the land, so that's.
Well, yes and no.
Okay. So, and then the other thing I just want to mention, I've got grandkids that play soccer, and they play at Atlas, and they play at Stoddart Park, and, actually, it's Crawford, excuse me. And the facilities are incredible. The park department does, recreation department does a great job managing those teams, and you see all the young parents out there with all these little kids with all this energy. And that, those, those programs that are offered by our city add a lot to what our city's about.
Yep.
You know, it's family, it's enjoyment, it's recreation, it's healthy, and we got a lot of open space for those parks. So, I just want to commend our city for the maintaining the parks and running that recreation department super.
Thanks, thank you, Matt.
Can I peg on to Matt's? A question for Lisa regarding the Lakes issue. A while back, several months now, there was a question relating to the county and maybe the airport or something like that, as, as to whether the, the deal is going to go through. Do you know what I'm talking about? Where does that stand, if you can comment?
We have, well, some of that is in the, in the hands of the attorneys representing all the entities at the table, but.
So, still.
We, it is my opinion that we have till the term that the Lakes Highway District has for their lease with the county, up until that time, to exercise our right to the way the contract is currently written, and then we will have to decide after that what our future is.
What is that time?
10 years.
10 years from now?
Plus or minus, or plus, minus, maybe, yeah. More minus than plus.
So, we at least have 10 years. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other roundtable discussion? I have one thing for council tonight, and I just want to ask you to listen and not necessarily have a conversation. We can certainly have one later. I want to ask for your help with these meetings, keeping them focused. I want to remind us, as a group, the purpose of these meetings is to conduct business, and that our business is presented as agenda items. All of us, all five of us, at least over the first 10 months or nine months have been here, have twisted or, or, or used agenda items to read prepared speeches, statements, and that's really not the point of city council meetings. We're supposed to conduct business efficiently, effectively. It doesn't mean we rush it, but to use the dais as a political pulpit is, in my opinion, inappropriate. So, I'm going to ask you all to, as we go forward, keep me honest to doing that and to yourselves, to try to limit comments to the discussion and to a motion if a motion is made in support of that agenda item. And I thank you for listening. We are going to now move, or I'm going to ask council to allow us to move into executive session to communicate with legal counsel, for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated.
I'll motion that we go into executive session based on Idaho Code 74-2061F.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? May I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, for the public, I wish you safe travels home. Thank you for attending. Before we roll into executive session, let's break for five minutes. Let's come back in at 6:48. That way, you guys can do bio breaks, and then we'll get through our agenda.